I'd like to welcome you all to the February 29th regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. As you please stand now for a brief moment of silence. You may be seated. We do have some very special VIP guests with us this evening. I asked Dr. Bracy to come forward now and introduce them at this time.
Thank you Chair Patello and good evening to everyone. I have the privilege to welcome West Haven Elementary School to the school board meeting tonight. And we have two students Jaquay Thomas and Harmony Speller Bell, who will give the pledge of allegiance and school statement. And as they come forward, Dr. Grigsby, you can please join as well. As they come forward, I will give you a little background on each of the students. First, Jaquay is a fifth grader at West Haven Elementary School. His favorite thing to do is to play Roblox and his favorite subject is reading. We love to hear that. Jaquay's favorite foods are buffalo chicken wings, crabs, and strawberries. Yeah, oh yeah. Now, I'm gonna give you a run for your money on those buffalo wings now. Because those are some of my favorites too. When he grows up, he wants to be a car salesman. And he has some great words of encouragement to other children. And that's dream big and reach for the stars. All right, thank you Jaquay. All right, next Harmony is a sixth grader at West Haven Elementary School, where she's been a student since kindergarten. She's currently an honor roll student and part of the gifted and talented program at West Haven, a student ambassador and member of the tech squad. Harmony is also a talented artist. Her artwork was displayed at the Chrysler Museum of Art last year as part of the Arts for Learning Program. If that were not enough, Harmony is also a yellow belt in karate. And she participates in basketball and soccer. So Harmony, if I need a bodyguard, can I call on you? Thank you. All right, so with that, before they get started, I would like to recognize the families of Jaquay and Harmony. If you all are present, will you all please stand and be recognized? All right, very good. And parents, feel free to come and get a straight shot if you want. You're not gonna bother us. Yeah, come on, that's fine. We encourage it. All right, so at this time, I will turn it over to you Jaquay. Yeah, you can pull it to you.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Good evening, my name is Harmony Speller Bell and I am in the sixth grade at West Haven Elementary School. This evening, I would like to highlight some of the programs and initiatives that we have at my school. At West Haven Elementary School, we provided backpacks and school supplies for every student at the beginning of the year in September. The administration was able to accomplish this because of generosity of our community partners. In the month of October, we had trunk retreat, which was an alternative event designed to keep West Haven students and families safe by providing free candy, activities, and games to ensure students were able to celebrate Halloween with the school community. In November, we provided Thanksgiving baskets that had turkeys, hams, and all of the trimmings to identify needy families in our school. We had our annual holiday concert in December and there were 450 parents and community partners in attendance. The day before holiday break, we had hot chocolate cupcakes and a movie to celebrate a job well done for the first semester. Every third Wednesday, we have our positive behavior intervention support, PBIS store open in the cafeteria, where students can cash in their West Haven bucks for students who are following rules, exhibiting good behavior in the classroom, or being courteous to their peers. The school had just had a sneaker ball for students and dads. The goal of the event is to encourage dads and male mentors to visit the school and become an integral part of the West Haven community. Some of the programs for students are safety patrol and sixth grade ambassadors, which help with dismissal by going and notifying teachers that students' parents are at the security desk. Students also participate in the technology team, which are students who are tech savvy and can help with troubleshooting problems with the Chromebooks. West Haven Elementary School is in the process of starting a girls scout troop and a cheerleading squad. We also have virtual Saturday school, which begins March 2nd, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This program has 74 participants from grade third to sixth grade who will receive remediation based on their academic needs. Assessments and recommendations are by their teachers. We also have attendance recovery tutoring on Tuesdays and Thursdays after school from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for students who need to remediation and to recover absences. Please feel free to come and visit our school at any time. Thank you for inviting West Haven Elementary School tonight and allowing us to share with you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Grigsby.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Chairman of the School Board, Dr. Patello, Vice Chairwoman Ms. Atkinson, all of the school board members and school officials. My name is Patricia Grigsby, I'm principal of West Haven Elementary School. My assistant principal is Ms. Delaney Outlaw. And we would like to thank you for your continual support and giving us the opportunity to lead West Haven Elementary School, the home of the Blue Jays. This year, our school's theme is stepping into success daily. We will reach success daily by incorporating academic rigor, teaching students to use critical thinking skills, and helping them to reach their full potential academically, socially, and emotionally. Thank you for giving West Haven Elementary School the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you so much. If y'all can stay there for a second, Ms. Boone is gonna come down and share something for the students.
And as she comes, I want to say good evening to Ms. Outlaw. I didn't see you sitting over there beside Dr. Grigsby.
Thank you both for coming and sharing your time with us. We look forward to seeing your artwork, so keep it up.
Thank you.
You are welcome. And we look forward to hearing about your career endeavors. And I love a good book too, Barnes &amp; Noble was my favorite place. So thank you both.
Thank you all so much. Agenda item 3.5 is a school board mission statement, Ms. Boone.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.6 is attendance, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Here.
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 Present. Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.7 is consideration to approve the agenda for Thursday, February 29th, 2024. I am intending a motion at this time. Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Futreal. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson, yes.
Ms. Boone, yes.
Ms. Futreal, yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes.
Ms. Thomas, yes.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1 is our student representative report by Ms. Gardner on tonight.
Good evening, everyone. It's so lovely to see you all again.
Good evening.
For my student report today, me and Karina have put together a little something. We are working very hard to achieve our committee in order to continue to spread awareness about digital footprint in our community. We are still putting together our committee, picking strong and dedicated students that are willing to put in the work necessary. We are looking to have our first meeting the second week of March and can't wait to bring you updates. I know Karina has been looking into her school for some students for this committee. And I have reached out to all of our CTE teachers over at Churchland, as I feel like this is a good, you know, CTE moment for them. Next, I want to, sliding into that. Next, I want to bring attention to our CTE educators and students. This department and programs with it are doing an amazing job of cultivating, cultivating, excuse me, our student body into strong, hard, independent workers. Recently, we've had multiple students from Manor High School win awards at the regional FBLA competition. Two of those students took first place, our student rep Karina being one of them actually. Along with that, we have a big congratulations and good luck to the students from all three of the high schools that are traveling to the DECA competition this weekend. I would also like to congratulate both the trucker and the Churchland Truckers Indoor Track and Field Teams and the boys' basketball team for making it to state this year. The boys' basketball team unfortunately lost, however, they did put up a good performance. And most, if not all of our track and field members came back with a medal of some sort. Along with that, I just wanted to say, thank you for this opportunity. I have also been reaching out on the front of digital footprint for, I've been trying to come up with like a little in-class presentation to give to our lower years, such as our freshmen and things of that, as they're really reaching that age where if they're not already using social media, they're going to be on social media, if not updating their usage. Thank you.
Thank you so much, great job. Do you have any questions from board members at all? Thank you so much, great job, have a good night. Agenda item 5.1 through 5.4 are resolutions. And I'm gonna ask Dr. White if he would come at this time.
Good evening, School Board, Dr. Chair, Dr. Patello, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board members, and Dr. Bracy. I'm gonna be up here for a little bit. So we'll go ahead and get started. Our first resolution is the Youth Art Month. Whereas Youth Art Month is observed annually during March as a means of emphasizing the role of arts in public education and whereas this year's, this yearly celebration helps students develop a lifelong appreciation for critical thinking and creativity and whereas the arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of school improvement and whereas the Council for Art Education, Inc. and Art and Creative Materials, Inc. have designated March as Youth Art Month, selecting dream and art as the theme. Now therefore, be it resolved that Portsmouth City School Board recognizes March as Youth Art Month, leading our community and supporting art education, and further resolve that this resolution be made as part of the school board's official minutes and that copies will be forwarded to all schools and administrative offices.
Thank you, sir. I am intending a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Heinz, second by Vice Chair Atkinson, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson, yes.
Ms. Boone, yes.
Ms. Futreal, yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes.
Ms. Thomas, yes.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patello?
Yes. Thank you. Agenda item 5.2 is consideration of a resolution recognizing music in our school's month, Dr. White.
Whereas music develops students' listening and reading skills, collaboration and creativity, and whereas music education includes a broad range of genres and active experiences, and whereas music, along with the visual arts, significantly enhance the morale and quality of learning environments, and whereas Portsmouth Public Schools have primarily responsibilities of preparing and encouraging young people to assume a productive role in society, and whereas National Association for Music Educators have designated March as Music in Our Schools Month and selected I See Me in Music Education as this year's theme. Now therefore, be it resolved that Portsmouth City School Board recognizes the observance of music in our school month as an opportunity to support music education and that our entire community is encouraged to join in on this special recognition and be it further resolved that this resolution be made part of school board's official minutes and that copies be forwarded to all schools and administrative offices.
Thank you, sir. I am intending a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Thomas, second by Ms. Heinz, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson, yes.
Ms. Boone, yes.
Ms. Futreal, yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes.
Ms. Thomas, yes.
Dr. Whitaker? Yes.
Dr. Patello?
Yes. Thank you so much. And we do have some of our music staff in the audience, if you could please stand so we can recognize you. Thank you, thank you so much. Agenda item 5.3, consideration of a resolution recognizing Employee Appreciation Day, Dr. White.
Whereas free and equitable education is an essential aspect of America's strength and whereas Portsmouth Public Schools are vital to the success of our communities and whereas our schools shall, our schools share the responsibilities for academic excellence in Portsmouth to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship and whereas the exceptional personnel of this division dutifully guard the academic and social well-being of our students. Now therefore, be it resolved that this first Friday of March be designated as Employee Appreciation Day and be it further resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board extends its sincere appreciation to our dedicated professionals and support personnel who provide high-quality educational programs and services for our youth and be it finally resolved that this resolution be made part of the school board's official minutes.
I am intending a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Futreal, second by Ms. Thomas, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson, yes.
Ms. Boone, yes.
Ms. Futreal, yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes.
Ms. Thomas, yes.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patello?
Yes. Thank you so much. Agenda item 5.4, consideration of a resolution recognizing Schools Social Workers Week, Dr. White.
Whereas school social workers are vital to the advancing, the vision and mission of Portsmouth Public Schools and whereas our social workers generously share their craftsmanship, lasting contributions to education of our youth and whereas school social workers exemplary service can ever be a model for all who aspire to contribute to our schools and whereas the National Association of Social Workers has designated the week of March 3rd through the 9th as School Social Workers Week and has selected empowering social workers as this year's theme. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board extends its sincerest appreciation and gratitude to all the school social workers for their commitment to advancing our youth and be it further resolved that all school division personnel be encouraged to observe School Social Worker Week March 3rd through the 9th, demonstrating our profound gratitude for our school social workers, continue to support, and be it finally resolved that this resolution be made part of the school board's official minutes that an executed copy be sent to all schools and administrative offices throughout the division.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Boone, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson, yes.
Ms. Boone, yes.
Ms. Futreal, yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes.
Ms. Thomas, yes.
Dr. Whitaker? Yes.
Dr. Patello?
Yes. Thank you. Be it resolved, you can finally sit down, sir. Agenda items 6.1 and 6.2 are non-agenda and board agenda item speakers. Do we have any speakers at this time?
Yes, sir, we have two.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello, how y'all doing? Good. I have a daughter, she attends I.C. Norcom High School. And I just recently found out that they had got a new principal, I guess, this year. So I guess she implemented some new rules or regulations or whatever it is. So there was an incident where my child was caught in the lunchroom when she was not supposed to be. So instead of the phone call before the final decision, the phone call was after the decision. Now, I can understand you sending her to ISS, I'm down for it. If she gotta be there Friday and then going there for the next week for the, for the, for it, then that's what it is. But what you're not gonna do is you're not gonna call me and say, I'm just calling to inform you that your child has been suspended for three days for skipping, for being in the lunchroom. So I had to tell her, hold on, pump your brakes, what you talking about? Because this is something new for me. I've never, I've never, it was kind of extreme for me. I've never heard of a school or a principal suspending a child just for being in the lunchroom when they wasn't supposed to be. So when I asked them to schedule a meeting, I was told I was gonna receive a phone call. Today is Thursday. I called Friday, where they called me Friday. I've yet to receive a phone call from the principal, assistant principal, the administrator of her grade, nobody. And I want to know who has given that much power to that one particular person to make a decision before informing the parent. I don't think that it's fair for someone to call the parent and say, I'm just calling to inform you. No, you're not calling to inform me of anything. What you could have done was called me and said, hey, Ms. Brown, this is the situation. Can we talk about it, see if there's another way we can amend this issue? Instead of you suspending that child for three days. I believe the return phone call that was not made to me was unprofessional on so many levels. And from my understanding, this isn't the first time that this principal has taken such measures with children. The way she talks to the children is unacceptable. I don't know what's going on inside of I.C. Norcom High School that the principal and assistant principal and whoever else feel like they have to take such extreme measures for one child or another child that isn't causing a disruption, fighting, causing drama, whatever it was. Because she didn't cause drama, that wasn't the problem. She wasn't down there causing fights, fussing, nothing. I am not happy about that decision. And I was told that I had every right to appeal that decision, but I never got the chance to because nobody never called me. Nobody. Nobody took responsibility for it. And that's my issue. So whoever's in charge of making the policies and procedures for I.C. Norcom High School, something has to change because it's not fair, not just to the child, but to the parent as well. You can't call a parent and say, I'm just calling to inform you. When you calling to inform somebody, you're letting them know what's going on before it happens, before you make a decision, not after. This girl lost three days of school, for what? When she could have been sent to ISS and still been getting her work done. She was sent home with no work, so that means that she's three days behind. And that means that she got to catch up. So instead of taking the proper and necessary steps, you took advantage of your position. And that's not fair. It's just not fair and it's not right. I don't know what y'all do specifically up here. I really don't know. But all I know is that y'all do make decisions and y'all do vote on certain things. So what I'm asking y'all to do is to just take this into consideration about what's going on inside of I.C. Norcom High School and who is actually in charge of those children and making decisions. Because it's not fair. That principal, this ain't the first time I've heard complaints about her, not just from children, but from other adults, parents. I put a post up on Facebook and I got a lot of responses from parents about this principal and her policies and procedures.
Okay, I'm gonna allow Dr. Bracy to respond.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
With the information regarding communication to you, I am aware that there was communication that tried to reach out to you, but Dr. White can give more specifics on that. So you want to?
If we can, I can meet with you at the end because we do need a correct phone number.
Okay.
If that's all right, because we tried to call and it kept saying can't receive calls.
Okay, we can do that.
All right, so you'll get with her.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Dr. Patello, the chairperson, Ms. Atkinson, all the school board, and guests here tonight. My name is Dr. Manuel and I am an instructional facilitator at I.C. Norcom High School. To the reason today, what brings me here is I am an instructional facilitator and I have, we have coverage, a coverage. I have, um, we have coverage, a coverage problem at I C Norcom, where we have a shortage of teachers, where on March the 7th, you all sent out, March the 7th of 2020, you sent out a memorandum stating how the coverage is supposed to be at I C Norcom. It was, you supposed to go via frontline and then, um, the assistant instructors. Well, IFs are not up there. So we're being used in that capacity and not paid. Right now, um, I have spoken to my supervisor, I'm not giving names, but I have spoken to my supervisor and people of leadership before I got here, and I even went to human resources. Um, I don't wanna just bring a problem without a solution. Um, one of the solutions I see is if they followed the memorandum that you gave out, that would clear up one thing. And the other part of it is a job description for IFs. Right now, there's no job description. They're thinking that we're subs, they're thinking that we're long-term subs, but they do not have a job description for IFs. So, that brings me to point two. Point two, there, we're, y'all know we have a shortage of teachers, so we're covering classes. So IFs are covering, teachers are covering, and it's a shortage. And I, I am aware of that, and I don't mind, and I do perform every time I'm asked to perform. But with the coverage, if you put the frontline in place, the teachers won't be wore out. Their coverage will be covered, and IFs will not be used in that capacity who cannot be paid. The third, um, thing I wanted to bring towards y'all is security. We are also being used in the capacity of security. We are, my position is the duty of the bathroom. I don't have no problems, y'all, with doing the duty of the bathroom, because all the kids call me grandma. So I don't have a problem. They love me and I love them. So, uh, but again, uh, one thing I brought to a previous administration is, uh, dads on duty. So I just ask y'all to look at that, dads on duty, and see how they, um, caused the, the, the safety of the school, the changing of the environment of the schools, which bring me to the fourth point. Uh, I attended, um, the, the violence thing with Chief Jenkins. I thought, I, I was there by accident. I thought it was about, uh, helping with the violence, because I, like I do, I love my children, I see things that's happening. So that's what I thought it was, but it was actually resources there that day. My question is, where's the resources at I C Norcom? How, you know, what do we need to do to merge these resources? Because there was loads of them that was there that night, and it's money about to come in for those resources. How can we merge this to I C Norcom to help with the children with resources? And that's basically what, you know, I just wanted to bring it where, and I also told Chief Jenkins, I will volunteer, and I'm willing to give my service to you. If you say, "Dr. Manuel, I need you to do so-and-so-and-so to make sure this guy," I'm willing to do that, because I don't believe in just, you know, say, "I wanna be part of the, the solution and not the problem." So this is why I'm here before you today, and I thank y'all for my time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Agenda items 7.1 to 7.5 are consent agenda items. I entertain a motion at this time. Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Boone. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Ms. Putrel?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 8.1 is a monthly report curriculum instruction. Dr. DeVries.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, school board members, and Dr. Bracy. Um, I am here this evening. Obviously, you know that you've got your highlights in your packet, but I have some very exciting updates for you from the world of performing arts. So with me today, um, along with her support system, is, um, Ms. Garen Moody, who is our senior supervisor for performing arts.
If, if they're not singing, I don't want them up here. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
She has an amazing voice.
I, oh, I know, I'm just kidding.
I just have to say one thing. We had a holiday contest, door contest, and as part of the door, she was the singing, the singing aspect. She had the whole, she had a whole audience by the time that we were done, so. She has a beautiful voice.
Thank you.
I, I thought these were some baked goods up here.
All right, good evening. Does everyone have their box? Okay. Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Chairman Dr. Patillo, Vice Chairman Atkinson, esteemed school board members, division senior leadership, and all who are gathered here tonight. I am Garen Moody, the senior supervisor of performing arts, and I'm honored to share with you this evening. Impact. During our Fall 2023 Pre-Service and Professional Development Week, I, along with the performing arts teachers, worked together to ensure we were prepared to make an impact for our students and in our school communities this year. I, be intentional in our decision-making, planning, and delivery of instruction. M, magnify our school arts program so that we are highlighting student work and achievement and keeping the arts positive and relevant across our city. P, be professional with regard to our approach and relationships with all stakeholders. A, remember that academic excellence is the standard, and we have a responsibility to execute effective, meaningful teaching of the performing arts curriculum. C, communicate and collaborate by using a variety of methods to connect with students, colleagues, and families, and supporting the entire K through 12, excuse me, arts curriculum through vertical teaming and alignment within our department and engaging in cross-curricular collaboration. And T, teach in such a way that we inspire our students to love, appreciate, and understand the arts in the same way that someone taught us. You have received a box, and at this time, I'd like you to open it. You already opened it, great. You are ahead of the game. You are ready. You are ready. Over, it's okay, you're not overachievers, you're just ready. All right, I have a few questions for you. Can anybody tell me the name of the instrument you're holding? Anybody? Good guess, good guess. It's actually called a cymbal. It's called a cymbal. And can anybody tell me how that cymbal produces its sound? Oh, all right now, go ahead on, go ahead on, go ahead on. Well, tonight, I am proud that our department continues to make impact in our school communities, and would first like to draw your attention to how we are placing focus on the C in our impact collaboration between our science department, who is led by Ms. Davina Williams, who has joined us tonight, and our elementary music school programs. Take a look at how our grade five students are exploring the science of sound in their music classes.
Science is music. We talked about sound, how it travels, because there are some commonalities with that when you're talking about pitch, when you're talking about how the sound waves travel.
We learned about how we can feel vibration and how sound goes through a pressure wave.
I use the orf instruments, which are the wooden barred xylophone instruments, and the djembe drums, to feel vibrations, to hear the pitch, to hear, once again, combining the music aspect and the science aspect to that together. They feel the rhythm, they hear it, but they also feel the vibrations on the drum when they hit the drum with their hand. With the xylophone, they use mallets to initiate a sound.
If I hit this, it, this will vibrate, and it will make a noise. Using my physical touch to, it vibrated because I hit this or that, and it made a noise.
In my opinion, the connection in between music and science is energy, using your vocal cords for like, energy, like sound energy, kinetic energy.
We're just trying to make those connections between music and science. Education should not be isolated. I can even take things that they learn in other subjects. We create songs to help them with their tests, to give more representation, to make learning fun. When you put music with anything, it just, it, you can feel the excitement inside as well.
We are steam, not stem. Without the arts in support of everything else, kids need to be engaged all the time, and music is one possible way, guaranteed way, that you can pull in every student to engage them in a kinesthetic, oral, and aural aspect of learning.
So, as you can see, the performing arts department understands the need for an all-inclusive approach to ensuring that our students are successful on their core content SOLs. I invite you to continue exploring the musical sounds of your cymbal, and let that be a reminder of the hard work that our fifth graders are doing as they explore the musical sounds of their instruments as well. In addition to our partnership with the science department, we are also collaborating with the Office of Reading and infusing writing into our music lessons on a monthly basis in grades two through six. We look forward to continuing our cross-curricular collaboration throughout this school year. The second element of our collaborative efforts are focused right within our department. As we prepare lifelong learners, we have a series of goals, and in order to realize these goals, we must work together to understand what is needed on each level. Truthfully, our middle school programs have experienced the most difficulty backing, bouncing back post-COVID, and we're working hard to bridge those gaps. How are we doing that? I'm glad you asked. Each month, our team has met to engage in a variety of professional development topics intended to build student musical literacy and performance ability. Additionally, our middle school teachers have provided professional development for our elementary school teachers so they know what rising seventh graders need to know musically when they get to middle school. Our secondary teachers have done peer observations with one another to provide feedback in, in regard to instruction and preparation for eighth graders transitioning to ninth grade arts courses. Our community of arts educators takes pride in sharing best practices with each other. To enhance our student skills in the arts and cultivate musicians who are well-versed, equipped, competitive, and capable of delivering high-quality performances, it is essential that we develop our teachers' expertise. Lastly, when it comes to collaboration, we work closely with various community organizations to offer students both in-school and after-school performing arts experiences. Collaborations with colleges and universities, Portsmouth Community Concerts, the Virginia Symphony Orchestra, the Virginia Children's Chores, Virginia Arts Festival, Arts for Learning, Richmond Ballet, Ballet Virginia, and Governor's School for the Arts, just to name a few, have provided our pre-K through high school students with opportunities such as participating in master classes, attending concerts, receiving technical, vocal, instrumental, and dance training, and participating in after-school steel pan and string ensembles, among others. We are actively recruiting students during this season. Our middle school bands, orchestras, and choruses are visiting elementary schools, while our high school bands, orchestras, and choruses are visiting both elementary and middle schools. These efforts are aimed at increasing student interest in and commitment to the arts. When students show interest and dedication to arts programs that we offer, we are committed to supporting them as they pursue higher education. I am pleased to announce that in December 2023, with the assistance of the Portsmouth Schools Foundation and several community organizations such as Jazz Legacy Foundation and Portsmouth Community Concerts, among others, which have generously provided honorariums to our department, we were able to award scholarship funds to ten of our 2023 graduates who were actively involved in performing arts programs, especially those involved in our Port Town Magic Ensembles. These scholarships will help students pursue their journey as lifelong learners at various colleges and universities. With your ongoing support and avocation of the arts, we will continue to impact students and guide them towards success, both academically and in the arts, ensuring that they represent our division in a positive way. As I conclude, I invite you to follow us on Twitter and stay updated on all of our department happenings and events. As you know, March is Arts in Our Schools Month, and we have a variety of performances taking place throughout the month. I'd like to acknowledge the performing arts teachers who have joined me this evening. They've already been recognized. Thank you all so much for coming tonight. They work tirelessly every day to provide the best arts instruction for our students. Lastly, to all of those assembled tonight, we offer you our deepest gratitude for the support, resources, and most of all, encouragement that you've provided our department and students when these la, within these last few weeks as our Port Town Magic Show Choir and Dance Ensemble performed in Dallas, Texas at the COSPA Conference just last week. The students showed out and made us Portsmouth proud, and to you all, we would like to simply just say, "Thank you, board, for all you've done for us." Thank you so much. Thank you.
I, I knew, I knew I could get a song. I knew I can get a song. I knew it. No, thank you so much, Ms. Moody, and I wanna echo your comments to students. They definitely outdid themselves, uh, at the COSPA Conference, and they've already been requested by other school divisions and, and other, uh, organizations, so I wanna thank you for all the hard work that you do, and thank your staff. I, I wanna recognize them again because uh, performing arts staff, it is, is difficult to come by these days, and, and ours have been dedicated to us, uh, for years, so thank you, Ms. Sandy Davis, the band director at Churchland Middle School.
Yes, yes.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Pamela Morris, the chorus director at Manor High School.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Marie Weber, the chorus, chorus music teacher at Wordview Elementary School. And thank you, Mr. Thorny, the music teacher at Churchland Academy.
He's at Parkview.
Parkview, sorry. Change, change is a coming. Now, he, he started at Churchland Academy though, right? Okay, I remember, okay. But, but thank you all for all that you do for us, um, and for showing up tonight and supporting our students in the way that you do. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other comments or questions? Oh, Ms. Atkinson reminded me that we do have Minds in Motion that's happening on Wednesday, March 6th.
That's right.
At Brighton and Lakeview Elementary, so y'all feel free, please, to attend that.
I C Norcom High School, 6 o'clock.
Oh, at Norcom, okay, well, school's right.
Yes, yes. Please come. You are more than welcome to come. 6 o'clock, we're having a reception. 7 o'clock, the event.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas, you? Oh, you coughing? Okay, thank you, okay. Thank you all so much. All right, agenda item 8.2 is V S B A School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. So I guess I'll do this. Uh, we cannot thank our board clerks enough. Uh, they, they do, I know a lot for me, day in and day out, to, to keep me straight and keep me in line, and, and Susan knows how to call me and get, read me my rights and give me the business if I don't call back in time, so. But I do wanna read the resolutions recognized by V S B A. It reads, "Virginia School Board's Appreciation, School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, February 12th through the 16th, 2024. Whereas school board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts, and whereas school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with school business of her or his county or city as may be required by the school board, and whereas school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media, on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and whereas school board clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings, here they are tonight, and whereas school board clerks help to ensure students achieve their highest potential and provide an evaluation. and provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents. And now therefore, the VSB A Board of Directors does hereby recognize February 12th through the 16th, 2024 as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And I will read one certificate before I bring it down. It says, "2024 VSB A School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Present to Kathy Chambers in appreciation of your dedication and hard work for public education through continued service to the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and is signed by Dr. Cardia Patillo, VSB A President, and Gina Patterson, Executive Director." Let's give them a hand. All right, agenda item 8.3 is School Board Appreciation Month, February 2024, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chair Patillo. And I have the certificates for the school board members. They weren't as fancy. VSB A wasn't as fancy with a resolution for, for you all.
I do have it, man.
Oh, you got it.
I've been doing it all month.
Right. But I would like to read the certificates for the, for the school board members. And each, each, each board member, as well as our student school board rep, has one as well. And it says, "VSB A School Board Appreciation Month, the heart of education, our school board, 2024." And this is, the first one would be for Ms. Sarah D. Hines. And it's signed by, this is, this is different to see this. Signed by Dr. Cardia Patillo, VSB A President, and Gina Patterson, Executive Director. All right, so I will pass these out to each of the board members. And I also want to thank you all for, for what you do. You know, I know you don't get that often, but this job, a lot comes with it, so. And I appreciate the support that you all provide for the school division as well.
And if we could come down front and take a picture, we have to send it to VSB A for School Board Appreciation Month.
Yeah, if we could just tighten up just a little bit. Perfect. Yep, that's great. One, two, three. Got it.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item 9.1, Monthly Report, Dr. Bracy.
All right, thank you, Chair. Good evening, Chair Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the board. I would like to begin tonight by reminding families that there's still some time for them to weigh in on the, on the progress of our division. Last Tuesday, February 20th, a link to the 2024 Family and Community Engagement Survey was emailed to all PPS families. This is a three-question survey that allows families to share how they feel the division is doing in three key areas regarding student success and family engagement. This is how we're tracking our progress as part of our strategic plan, Expedition 2025: Purpose Promise Success. Originally, the survey was closing today, but it has been extended until tomorrow at 5:00 PM. So if you have not already completed the survey, please check your email for the reminder link. Secondly, I would like to let our community know about this wonderful event that will, that will be held next Wednesday, March 6th. But Ms. Atkinson stole my thunder and already talked about the, the Minds in Motion, so everybody's well aware of that. So, you know, Minds in Motion with Richmond Ballet is something we've been doing for a few years now. So, you know, and I think we all enjoy it. I think I remember the first one we did. We even had board members coming out from the audience and, and being involved. And I think Mr. Malachi, I remember, was at Churchland High School, and that's when I got to see the rhythm that you, that you had at that time. But we're looking forward, we're looking forward to the concert and the incredible performances. It'll take place at IC Norcom High School, as was mentioned. For our third grade families, I also want to share about our SOL test prep classes that are coming soon. It'll be hosted by our Title I program. There will be a reading SOL prep class Wednesday, March 13th. There'll be a math SOL prep class on Wednesday, March 20th. Both classes will be at Emily Spunk Center, and will go from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. You do, you do have to register by March 10th. So families, if, if you are interested, you can call our title, Office of Title I and Special Programs at 757-393-8392 to get more information. Finally, just a reminder for all of our families, Tuesday, March 4th, schools will be closed for students as it is a teacher workday. Thank you, Chairman Patillo. That completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item 9.2 is a roll call vote for the instructional calendar for 2024-25. I entertain a motion at this time. Motion made by Ms. Futre, second by Vice Chair Atkinson. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Thomas, then, Vice Chair.
Sure, thank you, thank you, Chair. I do have one question regarding the instructional calendar. I see that it, I had to pull it up, that the teachers go back August 12th, is that correct? But then August, one day is a flex day for teachers, I think. What, can you explain that flex day one more time? I know you explained it at a prior meeting, but I don't remember who, what exactly that was.
Yes, the teachers go back on, I'm pulling, actually, my data, is August 15th, and that's a flex day. And what that means is they can either come on that day or make up the 7.5 hours during the first nine weeks of the first semester. And then the start date for the teachers, if they don't do it, is the 16th.
Okay, so, wait, I'm sorry, let me. So the 16th, the Friday, is the start day? I'm sorry, say that one more time.
That's the date they're required to be.
August 16th?
Yes.
Okay.
The 15th is the actual start date, but they can either come that day to get their room set up, or they can make up those hours during the first nine weeks. And you'll see that same thing at the end of the school year on the last day.
I guess I don't see, and maybe that's why I was confused. I don't see the 16th as the required start date on the calendar.
You, you wouldn't see that on this calendar. That's shared with the principals, which would then share it with the teachers. This is like pretty much the instructional calendar for everyone else.
Okay.
But it is the 15th, is the flex day.
So that key employee date, just so I'm clear, because the legend, I'm looking at the legend if I'm pulling this calendar off. This is going to be the calendar posted to our website, right?
Yes.
Eventually? Okay.
Yes.
So this is just for instructional calendar, but we have the key employee dates, but we're not including the date of the 16th? I might just be reading it wrong. I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, like if I was to pull this and if any.
The start date is the 15th.
The 15th or the 16th?
Correct, but they don't have to come on the 15th.
Oh yeah, I see that, that's the flex day.
Right, but that's the start date, because what they'll do is they'll, if they don't come on the 15th, they'll make it up during the first nine weeks.
Correct.
So it's like, once they make it up, they will have worked the 15th.
Okay.
It's the 15th, Thursday.
What'd you say? I know, I know. I, it's the way I'm reading it. If we're listing the other dates, I thought we was going to put the required 16th date up there too, but if it's clear to everyone, I understand.
So I, I think, I think what he's saying is that, that the, the first day is August the 15th?
That's the, that's the flex day, but the actual required day is the 16th.
It's a flex day, but it's technically the first day, but they have the opportunity to flex if they like and come on the 16th.
I get what Charlie said, it's just, it's just not all outlined. That, I get what you're saying. I get. No, I'm just saying, it should be the fifth, it's okay. This is a, the internal calendar is going to have the 16th as the actual start date. This is a flex day. If they don't make it, if they don't attend the flex day, they make up the seven and a half hours within the first nine weeks. As long as the teachers understand by looking at this calendar, I'm good.
And, and to make it easy, I'm sorry, the 15th is the start date.
Thank you, okay.
We just, I guess, just be simple, 15th is the start date.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback on that one? Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
I'm gonna comment after we go.
So if I'm that, if I'm that teacher that goes in August 9th because I'm going on vacation, then I'm not hav, you know, if I go in and I set up my room during the summer, then I'm not having to report on the 15th. My report date is the 16th. Is that what we mean by a flex day? That we're giving?
No, ma'am. It, if they don't go on the 15th, they make it up during the first nine weeks. So once school starts, they have those nine weeks to make it up during the first quarter. So no, not in early August. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker?
Just for clarification, so that the public knows what we're voting on, can you tell us where, when students start in this calendar?
The start date for students will be Monday, August 26th.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and just to clarify, we start the, the week early, but we also going to end a week early as well.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was going to ask for clarification. So this calendar runs from August the 26th. There's the four-day weekend that's around Labor Day, which is a requirement by state if you do open before Labor Day. And our exit date, our last day of school, is June 6th, which is a week early. And so I know in discussions about this calendar, we made, you know, we were clear as a board that if we start a week early, that we get out a week early. So I, I want to thank the Calendar Committee and such for making that adjustment and making it very clear. Thank you.
And I also just wanted to state that within this calendar, we still do receive the full two weeks for Christmas break. We also still receive the day before Thanksgiving and your full spring break week as well within the calendar. So thank you all for your work and doing this. All right, if there's no more comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Thank, thank you so much, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And I just would like to ask, Chair, since we voted on the calendar, can Dr. Nalasco send out something, some type of communication tomorrow to let? Oh, going out now, okay. I just want the parents to be aware, we're starting a week early, you're out a week. You know, we didn't wait till the last minute, so please plan ahead now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You know Lauren's on top of it, you know that. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dot and Alasco. We now have agenda item 9.3, Board Member Comments. Do we have any? Vice Chair.
And this is a, thank you, Chair. This is a good segue to Youth Art Month. Last Tuesday, I went with April and the art department. We took some art students up to Richmond. Their art was actually on, on display in the Capitol Building. So I would like to thank House Speaker Don Scott for allowing them to, that opportunity to have their art displayed in the Capitol Building, also giving the students a tour of his office and, and words of advice. So again, Dr. Nalasco, if you want a story for Youth Art Month, they would love to share their experience. They was really excited about it, and, you know, it was a learning opportunity. And as we saying, art, music is collaborative, and it, and it takes community partners, all stakeholders, to give our children these opportunities. So it was a great day. I really had fun with them. Thank you to the parents. Again, thank you for the staff that came from the art department. Again, April Taylor Martin, she is awesome. She is amazing with the students, always wanting them to be out in the community and finding ways for their art to be displayed in the community. So that was great, so thank you.
Ms. Boone?
I just, um, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to also piggyback from being at the COSPA Conference and witnessing our Portsmouth students perform. It was really, really amazing to see other districts ask our chair in reference to capturing our students to be able to perform. They looked really nice, they sounded well, so I was really, really Portsmouth proud. So kudos again to our students, Port Town Magic.
Ms. Thomas, put your hand up. Okay, thanks so much. And again, I just want to thank you all for attending on this evening. And I also did want to give a shout out, Dr. Cotton, he's not here. He had an emergency situation today, he couldn't make it this evening. But his son was actually selected to be a page for House Speaker Scott for this session this year. So from our very own Churchland Middle School. And his name is Caleb Cotton. He may be sitting up here one day replacing me, so I'm excited about that. But thank you all for coming. Thank you for your hard work. Y'all have a good night, a meeting adjourned.